All right, good evening, everyone. Want to call this Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 11th of 2021 to order. Like to welcome those who are in attendance and our audience here this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV. Our first item of business is our invocation by the Reverend Ken Burns, Senior Pastor of Lower Creek Baptist Church, and we'll follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Donnie Potter will lead us in that this evening. So Pastor.
Thank you very much, and thank you all that are here. Thank you for -- I'm Kevin Burns. I'm the new Lead Pastor at Lower Creek Baptist Church. I've been in the area since, well, Halloween, just to be candid with you. October 31st, we moved from Buncombe County, and we're excited to be here. We're excited to be in the county. Of course, naturally, my desire as the leader of the church is for our church to be for the city and help you as our leaders in any and every way that we can. And so, and of course, naturally, if we can ever do anything for you or the city, we definitely want to, and yes is always the answer. So, but anyway, as we start this meeting, let's open up in word of prayer. Dear only Father, God, I thank you for this day. God, I thank you for who you are. God, I thank you that we serve the sovereign supreme authority of all. God, I thank you that we have promises throughout your Scripture that even in the midst of culture, in the midst of what our city, state, county, and country are going through, God, you promise us peace, where it says, "My peace I leave with you; my peace I give to you, not as the world sees it, but as I see it." So we don't need to be afraid, for you are a great shepherd, you are in control and sovereign over all. And God, I pray that we'd rest in that promise, in that truth. God, we thank you for your love. God, we thank you that you are always showing and displaying love to us and for us. God, I thank you for these officers, this city council government. God, I pray that you bless each one. God, I thank you for their desire, their heart, to help this county grow, succeed, and be effective and fruitful. God, I pray that you just keep them healthy. God, I pray that you give them your wisdom, your discernment, and your guidance as they guide the people of this great county. God, I thank you for guiding my family and I here. God, I thank you for the influence that Lower Creek community has had on the community, but will have even a greater impact in the days ahead. God, for we are all here to bring honor and glory to you. We are all here to magnify your name. And God, we thank you so much for who you are, for how good you are to us, and every day blessing us. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone. Are there any amendments to our agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman, the presentations are struck. Item number nine, which is an appointment from the agenda this evening, and move that to your next meeting on February the 8th.
All right, so striking item nine. Do I hear a motion that we adopt this evening's agenda, as has been presented by our clerk?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's amended agenda, as the county clerk has presented.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. And our first item on the agenda, then, is presentations, and we've asked our health director, Anna Martin, to be here this evening, and I think she's coming up first, and Dino Divanardi, our EMS and services guru, is with us as well, and I think Laura Easton with Caldwell Memorial Hospital is here as well. So you go ahead, Anna.
Good evening. Thank you for all your support during the pandemic. We understand it's been a lot, but we do appreciate your service. As numbers continue to rise, Health Department staff has continued to be busy, more so when we started receiving vaccine. We are currently in Phase 1B, Group 1, which is anyone 75 years or older. We are also finishing Phase 1A, which is healthcare workers working directly with COVID-19 and long-term care facilities. We are following state guidance of when to move forward into other phases. We are in hopes to move into Phase 1B, Group 2, within the next two weeks. This group includes healthcare workers and frontline essential workers 50 years and older. Over the past few weeks, we've seen an increase in calls, and we've talked about and trying to figure out the best way to solve that issue. So noticing this phone issue, phone line issue, today we've connected multiple phones to one phone line, allowing more calls to come in and assist the community. So we'll have multiple people throughout the Health Department answering that one phone line, and that's going to be the vaccine line. So hopefully, we'll be able to answer more calls. Page has also made an online portal so residents can sign up for a vaccine. Following the prompts, it'll allow the person to know which phase they're in and whether they'll be able to get the vaccine. So at this time, we're also working out logistics for possible drive-throughs. We don't have one scheduled as of yet, but we're looking at logistics in case we were to have one. But right now, the feedback we're getting from staff, from community members, the scheduling of appointments, and the safety, even as Jeannie has mentioned to me when we were talking earlier, is the best for our community at this point. This has not changed our public health model of go where you are. We have gracious staff who has went to a skilled nursing facility, a congregate living facility, funeral homes, healthcare businesses, and currently working on industry. As for vaccines and quantity, some counties may receive more than others, and they may be shipped at different times. But I'm going to let Jeannie talk a little bit about the vaccines and what we have, and how many we gave, and a little bit more information.
We started receiving our vaccine about the end of December, and we began vaccinating our healthcare workers on the week of January the 2nd. So to date, we've done roughly around 500 doses of vaccine to healthcare workers in Group 1B. We started 1B, which was 75 and older, last week, and since then, we vaccinated 224 adults that are 75 and older. And so, as Anna said, what we're doing is scheduling appointments for them to come in. What we do is put them on a waiting list, we contact them, and make them an appointment, and they come in, and then they have to wait 15 to 20 minutes after they receive their vaccine, just to monitor for side effects. And just keep in mind, too, that these are two-dose series, so we have to make an appointment for them to come back. Depending on which vaccine they receive, they have to come back in 21 to 28 days. So we have to accommodate that need also.
And do we go into the healthcare, like, facilities, nursing homes, and things like that? What is that?
We have a nurse that's contacting people that are interested. We've been out to dentist offices, pharmacies, Quantonia Hospice, and so she contacts them, and then we set up a time, either they come to us or we go out to them, depending on which works best.
So we have started some of that, though?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right. The other question I have is, I know that Bernhardt has reached out to the county and other places around offering assistance, and I found out today that the community college, and forgive me if you don't know, you just came back, you may not be aware of this yet, but the community college has reached out and offered their services from their, I guess, their nursing program.
Correct.
Offering to help any way we can, and that's awfully greatly appreciated from the community college, as well as Bernhardt. Any thoughts around what they can do? I mean, they're, I'm not going to say they're begging, but they're literally clutching to beggin' to help, to try to give you some staffing, give you a location if you need it, and those type of things.
Right, and part of that is the state created this whole system for the vaccine. It's called a COVID Vaccine Management System, and so you have to be a registered user of that system in order to get in. Right now, nurses are the only ones who have access to that, and you have to go in and register the patient, and then document when you get the vaccine. So we're limited, because they have to have the NCID sign on in order to get into that system.
Okay.
So that's where we're kind of limited for that, for the extra help.
We can always reach out and see if there's things within the Health Department, like answering the extra phone line that's happening, or logistics if we were to have something bigger, or within, that could help the nurses get the vaccine.
Yeah, I think, I know the community college reached out one day last week, and I'm thinking, I don't know who they're sure they talked to, but I think y'all were going to talk with them about something and then get back to them, so.
Yes.
I don't know if that's happened yet or not. It may have already.
Barbara has called me.
Okay, all right. The other question I had was, and I spoke to Anna about this last week, regarding our website, updating our website, is that going to be an opportunity for us to try to get some, because I know part of the problem is the paperwork ahead of the shot, you know, like going to the doctor and they give you a big old pile of papers. I understand that can be very cumbersome and time-consuming. Have we made any headway on our website as far as being able to get the forms available to the patients?
Well, I know with the website, Paige has put the vaccine.caldwellcounty.org, where they can sign up to be on there. As for whether they can register and make an appointment, not yet. That's something I'll have to get with Nick Green and Paige to figure out if that's something we'll be able to do.
How about the paperwork? Is there any paperwork ahead of time, like when you go to the doctor, you know, that you got to fill out paperwork?
It's all online. It's in that portal. They have to register in that portal.
Okay, so it is, once you get into that vaccines, whatever it is, dot com or dot org, that's where you can fill out that paperwork?
Well, that's a registration link, but there's a whole separate portal that you have to register each patient in, in that portal, before they can get the vaccine.
So you have to register, can the patient?
They can register themselves, yeah, yeah, but we don't know if that's, can be opened statewide for them to be able to access that. That's something we're still waiting on clarification.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So right now, that's not open to the patient, it's only open to your staff?
Right, correct.
Or whoever's giving the vaccine?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So we're still working on trying to figure out how the patient could access that portal to be, because I know that if we could, you know, in a real perfect world, if we could have all that stuff done when the patient gets there.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Then all they got to do is say, "Hey, my name's Donnie Potter. I'm here for a 3 o'clock vaccine. Thank you, Mr. Potter. I've got all your information right here. You've already completed it all. Please have a seat, we'll be right with you."
Right, and I think part of that.
If we could ever get to that point.
Yeah, well, and I think part of that, they're updating the portal as they've seen things that needed to be added to it when they first started.
Okay.
Anna, can you kind of give us an update as of today, you know, where we're at? Are we still gaining cases, surging? You know, has there been a little bit of a tail off? Just kind of update us where we're at as of today.
Sure. So total positives, we have 6,923. Recovered, 3,088. Deaths, 83. And hospitalized, 53. I kind of went into detail, too, the Health Department's tested 4,448, and we had 350 positives. That's just the Health Department, that's not in total. We have two outbreaks, and then we have five clusters within the county. So that is, we are seeing an increase, but we will see more of an increase after, I guess, the New Year's Day kind of surge. Been talking to Dr. Lowry at the hospital, and it looks like, I'm still hearing, the peak is February, so that's something to look at as well, between after holidays, increase and the peak.
And if you were to, again, you're speaking to the Caldwell County citizens, what would you tell them? As you've continually done it on our, you've done public service announcements, you've done Facebook announcements, the Caldwell County Health Department's done a tremendous job of information and communicating, but if you would, if you would talk to the citizens today, what would you tell them, just to remind them that, what are the do's and the don'ts in a brief, in a brief message?
Just to limit gatherings, that's not within your household. Limit those gatherings. Wash your hands often, and just wear your mask if you're able to, and just keep your distance. It's kind of, we follow those three W's, and if you're able to eat your vaccine when it's available.
Thank you.
Were you seeing any side effects from the vaccine? A lot of people, you know, talking about that and hearing about it, and gossiping about it, and rumoring about it, so.
I think mainly for what we've seen, the ones we've given, is just mainly some tenderness at the injection site.
Side, which is fairly common for a vaccine.
Right.
And we are prepared, if something was to happen. We do have Epi, but then we also talk with Dino to see if we have people close by, if something was to happen as we were giving the vaccines.
And that's kind of one of the drawbacks right now to a drive-through, because of the wait time, once they get the vaccine. We have, because this is a new vaccine, so we really need to monitor them for 15 to 20 minutes afterwards. So that's kind of where logistically, it's kind of a little harder to do a drive-through.
What vaccine are, what vaccine are we giving?
We have both Moderna and Pfizer.
We, originally, we're only supposed to get Moderna, but the state, I guess, ran out of Moderna, so they gave us Pfizer.
You mentioned the hospital, and Laura's here with us this evening, and if you would like to add some stuff, Laura will be glad to listen to you. Kind of give us an update on how the hospital's doing, and where you're at, and.
Good evening, Laura.
Thank you all. It's really an honor for me to come and speak to you today, on behalf of all those extraordinary people that work at Caldwell UNC Healthcare, serving our community, especially this past year. I wanted to just cover a few things with you, to kind of give you an update on what we've been doing and where we're at. Just starting out with testing, our, we tried to take a leadership position and provide additional testing support to this community, in this county, in this region, through our two respiratory diagnostic centers, one here in Lenore, one in Granite Falls. And as of today, we've done over 40,000 tests at those sites. We're actually testing seven people every 15 minutes, if you can imagine the pace of the work that the folks are doing there. And they're doing that six days a week, in every kind of element, heat of the summer and the cold now. We do have some parameters around that to protect our employees, and one is, we really can't do it in the rain, because of contamination and sterile technique, and we don't want to do it under 40 degrees weather, because of just the environment for the staff to be working. But those have been very up and operational, and seeing significant numbers. Our highest numbers were around 380 in a day, and they kind of go up and down depending upon availability, but they remain very busy, and a big part of our fight here in this pandemic. I wanted to let you know that in November, you may recall President Trump receiving Regeneron, the monoclonal antibodies that rejuvenated him, and he spoke so highly of. Well, those were approved in November. We began offering that as a treatment here in Caldwell County. We've been very proactive in that, in that if someone goes through our respiratory diagnostic center and tests positive and meets criteria, which means they're over the age of 65 and/or have chronic conditions, we call them and we've pulled them in. And we've worked with nursing homes as well. When we hear about clusters and outbreaks, we've reached out and transported patients from nursing homes to the hospital, and we've done 215 infusions today, and I have only gotten rave reviews from everyone who's had the benefit of those treatments, significantly reducing the need for hospitalization and improving the way people feel, the length of the disease.
I had a personal friend who actually got that Saturday, and she posted on Facebook today that she had gotten it, and she's already feeling like 100% better.
Yeah.
So it's pretty amazing compared to where she was Friday, to where she is today.
It seems to be really helpful, especially in vulnerable people. They really.
Yeah, and she's probably, she's probably close to 80.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Definitely.
My mother, 83 years old, chronic COPD, came into the emergency room last week and having a hard time breathing, and she tested positive, so she went right, right from her pulmonologist to the emergency room, and she was given the Regeneron. And I'm thankful to say, and very blessed, that mom's at home, she's doing well, and still on her oxygen, but I'm very thankful. So thank you, and to your staff, very much.
Thank you for that feedback, and we're just, this is what we're here for. This is how we want to serve, and this is a tool in our tool belt, and we want to use it as aggressively as we can. And I can tell you, I don't know, there's no other hospitals in UNC health system who have done this many infusions and have been this proactive. So I'm pretty proud of my team on this one. As you are aware, we started seeing a surge, a rapid surge, about the week before Christmas. We went from 19 inpatient COVID patients up to about 45 within a matter of days, and we saw our inpatient hospital centers climb significantly in a very short amount of time. Put a great deal of stress on our system. Everybody rallied, everybody came into work, everyone worked hard, but we were looking at a potential continued surge after the Christmas holiday season, and an expectation of where do we turn next? So we went in and talked with the CEOs at the four hospitals in our region, Catawba Valley Medical Center, Frye Regional Medical Center, Blue Ridge, and Watauga Appalachian Regional. All of them, in particular in Catawba County, the two in Catawba County were seeing a similar surge to us. We were all holding patients in the emergency room, we were all taking care of patients in our recovery rooms, of our ORs, and we were all feeling a lot of burden from just capacity constraints. My CMO had the idea, maybe we should call Samaritan's Purse, because they put a hospital in Central Park, and they went to Italy. Why not come to Lenore? So I said, well, it doesn't hurt to ask. So we called, and from the time we made the decision to go forward, which was the 30th of December, in seven days, we built a hospital, and it's quite an impressive feat. The hospital is 30 beds for non-ventilator-dependent COVID-only patients. You've probably seen it, our parking lot, from parking lot to hospital. In the process, the state determined we needed to treat it like a full-fledged brick-and-mortar hospital, with every code element achieved. So we worked very diligently, and many of the folks from the county and the city helped us accomplish that task. So I really want to thank the county building inspectors, the city Lenore planning, Caldwell and Lenore Fire Department, EMS, Caldwell County EMS, the Lenore Water and Sewer, and probably some other people who helped allow this to happen. We began taking patients last Friday morning, Thursday night, Friday morning, and we've had 19 patients in the field hospital this morning, from both Caldwell and Catawba Counties, and we expect that to continue to increase over the next few weeks. We have already discharged four, six patients from the field hospital, so it's a dynamic process of coming and going. In case you haven't read it or seen it, it's four tents with eight patients per, I call it a tent, but they're really, you know, wards, and so it's a ward-like environment. They have everything in that ward that you would have in a medical room, a medical bed, IVs, pumps, monitors, everything you need, and they have nice heating, so in this cold weather, they're very warm, actually. So the other thing that I would really want people to understand, if they find themselves or their family member needing to be in the field hospital, is that the staff is phenomenal. These are folks who've worked with COVID patients around the world. They work in their regular jobs with COVID patients, and then they've been in the Italy, Bahamas, Navajo Nation, and New York City, caring for COVID patients. So they're very competent, and very kind, and very caring. The other thing about COVID care and hospitalizations is, it's rather isolating, you know, you really can't have visitors, you're in a room, people come in and out, very protected. And this ward environment, since all are COVID-positive, it's a little more of a social environment. There's always a nurse in the ward, they're never alone, and there's other people, so it's a little less isolating, and we've actually heard nice things from patients saying, "This is better than being alone in my room." The last thing I just wanted to touch on is also vaccines. We want to take a very active and leadership role alongside the Health Department in the administration of vaccines for our community. We had 80% of our eligible employees chose to have the vaccine already, and we're doing second-round vaccine this week for the 80% of the 750 people who are eligible. The vaccine itself was studied by UNC professors and physicians that we work with, and they've been teaching us all along about safety and effectiveness, and so we all feel very comfortable. And that's why we had such a high rate of taking the vaccination. We have a goal to try to get after this COVID thing and get it behind us, and that goal relates to our vaccine program. And what we would like to see is that 50% of our population is vaccinated within six months. We think that's when we'll really make an impact. So from there, it's just a matter of really looking at the numbers. How do you accomplish that? So if you think about 40,000 people getting vaccinated, and they take two vaccines, that's 80,000 inoculations, and so to break that down, it's 666 vaccines every day, Monday through Friday, for six months, in order to get half our population vaccinated. So that's pretty, that's a lot of vaccines. We've put together a program and a method to vaccinate between 300 and 500 per day, Monday through Friday, and we are well along the way. To date, we've administered 11,080, and today was our first day to really ramp up with over 75, so we vaccinated 307, and we hope to get that up to between 300 and 500 a day. It's a pretty aggressive goal, if you imagine how many people you have to schedule and how you have to flow through, but we think we've developed that. But even, even with our effort, that's still only half the effort. So we really need the participation of everyone, and I'm really thrilled to hear about the vaccine program the county is doing. I just really encourage you, we need another 300 a day, Monday through Friday, to reach that goal. I don't think we can really turn the corner until we get that type of penetration within our community. So anything you can do to help and support and fund and allow the resources. Our vaccine clinic is using volunteers, and we have, I think we have like 14 people a day working in that vaccine in order to keep, get that flow going. So it's not a small effort, but it's a really important one.
Your vaccine program is coinciding with the county's? So you're doing a vaccine program?
Yes.
And the county is?
Yes.
And so the county has a web portal to where people can sign up or call in? How does the hospital, how does that work if someone wants to go in that direction?
We have a call-in number. I didn't bring it today, but we're doing it from two angles. One, you can call in, leave a voicemail, we'll take your information, and we'll call you back and get you registered and signed up and ready to go, scheduled. And then we're also working through the, our physician practices, so that eligible people are being informed if they go to one of our practices, that they're eligible, and here's how you sign up, here's how you call in and get scheduled. It's the same system in terms of the government system we're both using.
Got you.
But we get to marry our efforts, and we'll get where we need to go.
I was a little, I was a little hesitant on the vaccine, and then a really good friend of mine, Dr. Bob Rockland.
Yes.
Decided to take it.
He was the first one.
So when I figured he was going to be the first one, I was like, well, if Bob's going to take it, he's done the research on it, he understands it. So that made me feel a whole lot better than I watched other, you know, profession, people in the profession that were, you know, starting to take it. So it made me feel a little bit better about it. I will tell you that I had the opportunity, I don't know if it was a good opportunity, bad opportunity, to be in your ER here a few weeks ago, prior to Christmas, week before Christmas, and.
It's very busy.
I tell you, so it's amazing. Those folks are true heroes. You know, I laid in there for eight or nine hours trying to, it was not COVID-related, thank goodness, so anybody's watching or concerned or not had the COVID, it was a different issue, but I had the fortune, opportunity to be in there, and you could see the, you could see the stress and the exhaustion, pure exhaustion on the faces of the staff, but I'm telling you, they never, ever flinched. The care was top-notch. There's no way that I could have got any better care anywhere else in the state or this country. I'm extremely proud of UNC Hospital and the staff, you and your staff, and what you've been able to do in the last several years, especially, you know, with what's going on today. It's truly remarkable of what that hospital is doing and what it's been able to do. So I encourage anybody who's ever thought about it or been hesitant about going to UNC Hospital, Caldwell Memorial Hospital, don't hesitate. The care is unbelievable. I mean, those folks have compassion. I mean, I was never left alone. I mean, here I am, I'm not even a COVID patient, you know, I was, had some issues, but they never left me alone. They were constantly checking on me. I just couldn't, I can't, I can't speak highly enough for the staff and what they accomplished. I saw it firsthand, I was in there for about seven or eight hours. They were going to meet me, but they didn't have a room, so I had to stay in the ER and take some, do some testing and stuff, so I watched it happening right in front of my eyes. I watched sick patients coming in, and I watched, you know, everything happening from broken bones to COVID patients, and it's just truly remarkable, and I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, Donnie. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Dino's going to give us the EMS perspective, transports and.
Yep, I'll be brief. I'll say the most difficult part of this is we're used to seeing a problem and fixing it. When you go out on a beautiful day or see real nice snow, and you can't tell that there's a pandemic going on, it makes it very difficult on staff, especially 10 months in, so it's very unique. I will say. I will say that both that spoke before me have really just taken the words out of my mouth. It's been unbelievable what the staff's been able to accomplish, I think, from the very top to the very bottom, in the county and at the hospital. There's no question, the response has been unmatched. Very easily, our biggest challenge was, we assumed the peak late summer, early fall, was going to be our most busy time. I can say that even as frustrating as these masks may be, and God knows, I don't need anything that pulls my ears forward anymore than they already do. I can't imagine how frustrating it is for staff, and for the public, seeing the political side of it, as well as the medical side of it, and the unknown, whether that be the vaccine or the virus. But I will tell you that from March, when it kicked off truly in Caldwell County, till, honestly, November, December, our call volume really wasn't that bad. There were times that it fluctuated, there were times that we were strained, but it was absolutely amazing, and I'll give you some very brief numbers here in a second. The transition that we saw late November through now, a lot of that can be attributed to Thanksgiving, and we understand that after nine months of a pandemic, people are frustrated and want to see family and want to get together. But decons are a pretty good indicator. So decontaminations, we do a decontamination after any positive patient or presumptive positive patient that's transported by EMS. So for example, in September, there were 55. October, there were 89. November, there were 115. December, there were 203. And as of just prior to, and I just got the text, we have 128, and it's only the 11th day of this month. So as you can see, the numbers continue to climb. So to answer the question before, just as both did, we're still seeing the climb. What does worry us is the fact that there will be a post-holiday peak. So for staff, not only, and I'll get to the field hospital in a second, but, so we're facing general call volume that obviously increases during this time of year. We are running Mutulate a lot to other counties. There's been some counties hit hard in their EMS divisions with COVID and other staffing issues. And then ED wait times can be a challenge at all of the area facilities. We've had wait times with patients. The highest to date is two hours and 14 minutes with a patient in the back of the ambulance. So the fantastic thing about the fact that the hospitals and all of them, not just UNC Caldwell, but everyone in the uniform and beyond, is working together. So we're doing stuff now that should have been done 20 years ago, sharing information being the most. We talk to the hospital more now than we've talked in years. Health department's literally in the EOC every day. And the fantastic part about it is, it's not one individual agency or one individual person, it's everybody working together. So now we know which hospital is inundated because of the census numbers. And that field hospital, and I heard Dr. Lowery speak on it today, it's that decompression. It's, the staff is now able to breathe. You know now, when you go by ambulance or you go into the waiting room, that, you know, hopefully you're not going to have to sign out AMA because of a quote-unquote "long wait", even though people understand that they have to wait, whether that be at Frye or Catawba, Grace, Caldwell, or anywhere else. Now those wait times continually decrease because now we're able to decompress. And although the call volume has gone up with transports to and from the field hospital and back to residences or nursing homes, the ability to get those sick patients, sick, ill, and injured patients into the hospital in a timely manner, and for their staff to be able to do that and effectively treat them quickly, you know, that never stopped, even though there was, there was never patient contact delays. But, you know, getting into a room, that slowing, you know, gets frustrating, but they never got, they never quit on us, and we never quit on them. And now being able to see the hospital join in the fight with the vaccines is fantastic. 22 active EOCs in the state for 24 hours a day, all 100 are partially active, whether that be, you know, 12 hours a day or 10 hours. So all the EOCs are completely manned and active, and I want to compliment the staff. You know, we have most of the departments participating now. It's been fantastic to see that transition and people willing to get out there. And then the final thing I'll say is, I was one of the skeptics with the vaccine. I'll be completely honest with that. I would say to anybody, do your research, lean on the people that you trust. If you don't take it, please understand that we are very concerned, and I want to make that very clear, the middle of this month, well, excuse me, the end of this month through February, because of the post-holiday rush. And whether you believe it to be a serious issue or not, I promise you it is. I have seen the system put to the test, maxed to absolutely its greatest potential, and the area counties can attest to that. If you want to call any of them, they can absolutely make that case to you. So all I would ask is, you know, follow those three Ws. You know, wear your mask, wash your hands, and wait six feet apart, because whether or not you feel like you can beat it or not, I promise you, there's somebody close to you that can't. And normally, I probably would not have gotten a vaccine because I consider myself to be a fairly healthy individual, but I know there's plenty of people in my family that we come in contact with and the public that I would absolutely impress upon anyone. I would love to see 80% participation in our staff, my own staff, and definitely the county of Caldwell. But what I would say is, the combination of who is willing and then fixing those three Ws, you know, whether you believe it's political or not, I promise you, there's science behind it. And no, you know, regular masks may not do what you want to, but it is a reminder, you know, everybody doesn't follow the speed limit, even those are the speed limit sign, but it is that reminder there to say, if you do this, you know, guidelines are like guardrails, has always been my saying. Guardrails don't keep you from going across if you get in an accident, but it sure saved a lot of lives, just like seat belts and speed limits. So try to keep up with those three Ws for our sake, if not for your own and your family. Promise you, the staff's still working at a very high level. And I would just say that, you know, if you don't have to call 911, if it is not an absolute emergency that you go to the ED, by all means, try to schedule that with urgent care or your primary care physician, because everyone is still taxed. I would say that the ED is still busy, but if you need us, I promise you, we'll be there. And I just want to, again, brag on all the staff from all the departments, everybody at the county, the hospital, the city. Fire departments have been phenomenal. I can't say enough about the volunteer service in Caldwell County, and the backup for the EMS agencies has been fantastic. So you not only have Caldwell County supporting you, I promise you, as Laura Easton and Anna can attest, all of the area counties are here for Caldwell, just like we're there for them. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. I've always got questions. So a few weeks ago, we had talked about, and I'm glad Laura's here because she may can chime in on this, for the patients that are not COVID-related or, I don't want to use the wrong terminology, maybe they're frequent flyer-type person that we transport all the time, have we ever looked at, or have we dug into it deeper about, sort of taken them to the ED, taken them to one of your urgent care facilities, you know, to Rivercrest or to Robbins across the road, to avoid that influx of ER traffic or ED traffic, as y'all used to be called ER, is what I keep saying, so...
We were moving heavily towards that. That is an alternative destination protocol that is technically being worked on, it's in the hands of the state right now. That's where the community paramedics come into play, that is a part of their component. That program has been phenomenal during this time, mainly because we're able to go out there and hopefully keep people out of the hospital. Because I can promise you, unless you have to be in the hospital right now, the hospital's not the place for you to be. There's no one that would dispute that. It's a little technical as to the legal component of that. There are protocols that must be in place. Dr. McClintock, who works for UNC Caldwell, has been phenomenal, she's our medical director. We have all that pushed forward to the state for final approval. Obviously, there has been some slowing of that due to the pandemic, you know, with everything being pushed. But yes, we're still actively pursuing that process, and it is, I would say, 90% complete. I'll have to check in with the state to see where it is with their hands.
And I'm sure that's something you guys would support, correct? Yeah, and you'd rather them to go to Rivercrest and go to ER.
We've also implemented telemedicine. So once, you know, we were fortunate enough through CARES Act to get the COVID ambulance, there'll be telemedicine capabilities, so we'll literally be able to, by phone or by tablet, speak to a physician, especially if they've already been seen and they just need additional medications called in or treatment that can be provided on-site. And we're working with the hospital for potentially helping out with infusions. There's been a lot of protocol changes and licensure changes at the state that allows paramedics to do a lot of this, whether that be inoculations with the vaccine or infusions with the different medications that'll be given for treatment. So medicine is catching up with the 21st century, I guess I should say. So, you know, being in the hospital's not always the best place to be, but I will echo what you said, if you need to be, you've got a lot of great choices in the uniform.
It's amazing. And I will tell you, Laura, my problem I've had, just to kind of give you an idea, it's been going on for months, and the ER is where I found what was wrong. So it was an autoimmune disease, and you had a local doctor here that was able to diagnose that while I was in ER. So it's just amazing, and I had a chance to go back and visit Rivercrest, great facility, just absolutely wonderful over there. So once again, I just, you know, guys don't hesitate to go to these facilities, they're top shelf. And Dino, I mean, you guys have done a fantastic job, just to see the stress on the system, and y'all have tested to the max, and it ain't broke yet. So you've done a fantastic job. And Health Department, you know, Anna, Jeanie, I just, you know, words don't, it's not enough to say thank you, but you and your staff have just been amazing. And watching everything come together and everybody work together at the hospital, the Health Department, the Community College, and the different organizations, EMS, it's just been amazing to see how this thing transitioned. And I actually went out and visited the field hospital the Sunday, a few Sundays ago, when they were working on it, and I had an opportunity to speak with one of the ladies from Samaritan's Purse, and she took me around, kind of gave me a little brief visit of it, and it's pretty amazing, very, very amazing, honestly, just to see what they can do. But she told me they've set that up five times in the world, not in the US, in the world. One of them's right here in North Carolina. So folks, if that don't tell you that we've got a problem and we need to do the right thing, nothing will. So I echo everything you guys have said, and we'll continue to fight this thing, and we'll get on the other side of it. I'm confident we got the right people in the right places.
All right. Dino, you mentioned the decal there early on. Can you just quickly touch on that and explain that process?
Yep.
So that especially our citizens that may be transported by an ambulance can understand that it's safer them to be transported by that ambulance, even if you have transported someone with COVID.
Absolutely. So it's a multi-level thing. I will tell you that the Fraser ambulances and the Excellence ambulances that we've purchased through our replacement plan have had UVC lights in them since our first purchase in 2014. So technically, the initial phase of decontamination starts literally when the patient gets in an ambulance. There's no, as long as the truck is running, it's decontaminating. Once we get the patient to the hospital, whether that be a COVID positive, a presumptive positive, which is someone that we believe would be positive, meets all the criteria, or the staff just has that feeling, we then dispatch someone from the EOC with a, we have, we've outfitted a truck with a decontamination system, which again, leaning on a company within our department, was, yeah, here's an example of it, a company within our county, MDI, gave us a heads up on this. We've been using it, and it's been in play. We have a couple different versions of this, but it's a spray that is done with CO2. It's an alcohol-based spray, very fine spray. Obviously, there's more than just medical-grade alcohol, but it is completely healthy, it will not bother you. It smells just like medical-grade alcohol, extremely clean. And we decontaminate the ambulance, everything in the ambulance, the stretcher, and the occupant compartment. The fantastic part is, and I know a lot of people say, well, how do you know? Because there's really no way to know, but we've had no true patient exposures from staff or staff exposures from patients. We attribute that to obviously effective PPE. I was one of the most vocal in the beginning of this. You guys know, sent plenty of emails and phone calls up to the state to make sure we were getting the same PPE that the hospital was fighting for, and they were gracious enough to provide that to us. But decontamination is key for that. So what you'll see is, you may see us out here with this, we do this in all the facilities. We have a mobile one in the back of the truck that you're welcome to come out and look at. And then we also have fabricated, you know, air packs with that ability with a very similar one, that we leaned on another local business to use it as a very similar product with different components that, in effect, kills the virus and other bacterias and germs. The great thing about this is, this has moved us again, like I talked about with other components, into the 21st century. Now all of our ambulances are going to be outfitted with their own decontamination system. So we have LED antimicrobial lights that are being installed on all the ambulances. UVC lights are already in the ambulances and in the HVAC system, which is, has a triple filtration, just like the hospital rooms and negative pressure, and then we can have this component as well. So you, I guarantee you, as bad as it is for me to say, because God knows, I've been here with this agency for 16 years, but our ambulances are cleaner today than they've ever been. We actually bought the material to test, just like we would food and the hospital, where you can test it, and it'll give you a readout as to how clean it is, and it is amazing what these things will do. And again, can't say enough about the local businesses, because we would have never known this without MDI and Marty Waters with some of the other ones. So it's been fantastic how the, how our local industry, you know, we have a lot of chemical and biomedical resources in the county, and they've been instrumental in keeping us safe and the patients safe.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would just add that thank you to Dino and Anna and Ms. Easton from the hospital. Thank you for everything that you guys have been doing. I know Jeff Cardwell's back there in the back, and he's helping with facilitating the CARES Act money that's coming from the federal government. So thank you for helping us and facilitate all that so Caldwell County can do all these things without burdening the taxpayer locally here. We know it's all tax money, we get all that, but we thank you for that. But I just want to say thank you to this county commission board, because for a lot of years, we have invested in our emergency management and our emergency services, whether it be ambulances or staffing, and I can only imagine, I can't only imagine where we would be if, without that investment of what we have done. I mean, you know, we make a lot of decisions here as a county commission, and we don't always agree, and I get that, and that's okay. And there's nothing political about that. It's about taking care of our citizens, taking care of our family and friends in Caldwell County. And I could say that about our sheriff's department, our EMS, every department in our county. And I'm just thankful that we've all had a part in that over the years, and we look today and we go, wow. And because of that investment rightfully spent, I mean, I honestly believe that, with our equipment, with everything that we're doing, we are actually saving lives, and it's just, that's just awesome. There's nothing else about that.
Laura touched on it. You would be very impressed with how many county departments, not only city departments, but county departments played a part in making that. I mean, it's unfathomable for me, and we had a part in it on getting that hospital. I mean, you have to understand that you pull the fire alarm, and yes, there are fire alarms in the tents. Not only is it tied to the hospital, it tells you what ward it is. Fire inspections did that. They were inspected by building inspectors, health inspectors, the city inspectors. I mean, it's unbelievable. The fire department helped set it up, the amount of people that went into doing that, and all that was made possible while still performing their own duties. So I would echo that, thank you all, because it couldn't be done. And I know that one life is absolutely too much, that's not a political statement, that's not, you know, me being politically correct. One life is too much, but I can promise you, 83 is the number, I believe? It would, I cannot fathom what it would be without the help from the top down. And I would say, anybody with any political pull, regardless of what your thoughts are or are not about president-elect, is any potential for additional local and state funding needs to be pushed, because it's not going away, and there's not been any more other than the stimulus checks to the individuals. So everybody has to be aware of the fact that there's, this isn't going away right now. We hope that by fall, and I think Dr. Lowery echoed that, depending on the vaccines, but we appreciate it. If there's anything we can do, let us know, and obviously you know where to get in touch with me.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dino. Thank you, everyone, for your presentation. That's one reason we ask you to come this evening, is to get the message out, and a lot of people just do not realize how much is going on behind the scenes for their well-being. And we've touched on a great number of it tonight, but it still is unimaginable how many man and woman hours there are going on in protecting the folks of Caldwell County and our state and our nation. And so we can only just say thank you. It seems it's not enough to say, but we are certainly appreciative of it. And I will say this, too, I'm very happy that with our hospital being in Caldwell County, because there's some counties around us that don't have a hospital, and I would hate to be in the shape that some of those counties are that don't have a hospital. And so we're very fortunate and lucky that we're able to have our own hospital, have folks here that live and work and take care of us and meet our needs. And so Ms. Easton, we appreciate you coming and appreciate everything that you're doing there, and we'll just pray that we get by this soon. All right. So with that, we'll move to our next item, and we have Captain Barlow here from Caldwell County Sheriff's Office, and he's going to talk to us about... County Sheriff's Office, and he's gonna talk to us about a house abatement and naming an attorney, I think, to handle that.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and I thank for allowing me. The item that I have on, on the agenda for the house abatement started about six months ago with the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigations. They have a section that is solely, solely dedicated to nuisance and abatement. And we've had a case in the past that we've dealt with, and this is kind of our second case we're looking at doing. As part of, first, we couple with the State Bureau of Investigations on the nuisance and abatement team. And we conduct the investigation somewhat jointly. It's actually more the State Bureau of Investigation that looks at the neighbors and things like that at a particular house. We look at the criminal side of it and supply that information to the State Bureau of Investigations' nuisance and abatement team. As part of that, we have to have an attorney to file paperwork to take the nuisance and abatement into court. Upon reaching, getting in touch with Mr. Lackey, he has a conflict of interest in the case due to the individuals that are involved. I think a partner has represented one of the family members, which has brought us to the point we need to move to a separate attorney to cover, cover this nuisance and abatement to keep Mr. Lackey out of and to keep our nuisance and abatement process going forward. We have spoken with Angie Clark, and she's more than willing to take the case, and she's got up to speed on it. She got, she started looking back through some of the case law related to nuisance and abatement cases. One of the cases that came forward was, it was a, it was a similar, it was a smaller police department that had hired an attorney outside of their county, their city attorney in that case, and had taken the abatement case through the courts, and the case got overturned based on the fact that the county, the city in that case went outside their normal county attorney. In this case, we didn't wanna fall victim to the same appellate case, and that's why we came forward today to ask for Angie Clark to be appointed by the county commission to represent the sheriff's office and the State Bureau of Investigations in this nuisance and abatement case.
All right. So hearing the request, what's the pleasure of the board in appointing Angie Clark to represent?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we appoint Angie Clark to represent the sheriff's office in this matter.
All right. Any other discussing or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you do in our community as well.
Thanks, Cap.
Next is our consent agenda, and that's our county manager, Mr. Dan Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We ask for your approval of the amendments from the December 7, 2020 meeting. Budget revision for the Granite Falls Middle School furniture, $140,000. Personnel policy, military leave update, approve the resolution for capital outlay loan. We have a budget revision for the health department to purchase an autoclave for dental, $6,016. There's no budget increase. And a budget revision, the board of election poll worker bonuses using private grants, funding $9,995.16, and that's no local dollars involved.
All right. So hearing the recommendation of the manager, what's the pleasure of the board in adopting our consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's consent agenda as the county manager has stated.
Any other discussing or comment? All in favor, six of five are saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening.
Say move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we appreciate you being here, appreciate those who joined us by TV, and we hope that you have a good evening.